Okay, the hour of six o'clock having arrived. We will call the regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board of Order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Oh, Long.
You said it, excuse me, sorry.
Trustee Long has an excused absence.
Okay, you won't hear the name again. I'm ready to call again, sorry.
He's attending to his, uh, his business, to business work.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
President Clattner.
Yes, and six members of the Village Board present. A quorum being established. Proceed with the order of business as set forth on the agenda for the record. The date is Tuesday, February eighteenth of two thousand and twenty. We are in the Village Hall. Here at four oh one St. John's Drive in Sherman, Illinois. The time is six o'clock. It's a regular meeting. That all being said, we're gonna... I'm gonna ask everybody to stand and face the flag. And Gordon, right? Gordon from the Census Bureau. He's gonna lead us in the Pledge of Legions. So on your cue.
All right. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we need to set the agenda. The agenda's been posted forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Uh, so the Chair will only entertain discussion items at this time. Anybody seeking recognition for discussion purposes seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to set the agenda. Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No paws, the ayes have it. The agenda's set. We're gonna move around and skip around in the agenda. Um, Gordon has a time commitment, um, also with the city of Auburn to where he's gonna go speak to them on the census. So I would like to afford him the option of coming forward, uh, offering him the floor to address the Board regarding the twenty-twenty census, when that's going to start and everything related to the census. And then he'll be available for questions as well. Uh, so we're actually skipping down to item number two under civic organization. Gordon, if you could please indulge us.
All right, thank you very much. My name again is Gordon Wayne. And I'm a partnership specialist for the United States Department of Commerce, which is a part of the census. And we'd like to talk a little bit about the census, why we have a census, how we will be conducting the census, and what you can do as a village to make certain you get the best count possible for your area. Uh, the reason why we do the census, I think you know, because every ten years the Constitution requires us to do so. So we, we set the, the House of Representatives that's determined by the census. In Illinois, we lose our game states every, I mean, seats every ten years based on the census, and also the government's spending. So school funding, local government, state government, federal government, all different types of spending, six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars throughout the United States every year, for each, each year for the ten-year period is spent, uh, based on the census count. So it's very important that we get an accurate count, uh, for, for this area as well as all the areas, so you get your fair share of, of funds. Uh, the census this year will be, will be conducted a little differently. In the past, ten years ago, uh, everybody received a paper copy of which you would fill out the, the information by paper. This year, the beginning of March twelfth, every resident in, in the United States will receive a letter with an invitation to go online and do the census through the Internet. So this will be the first time that will happen. So the, the key of that, March twelfth, that week in March twelfth, is everybody will receive a letter. So we've identified where all the residents are, uh, in, in the United States, all the dwellings, and that all of the letters will go out as a resident, your two or five month name, or whatever address you have. So that will go out first on March twelfth through twentieth. It will be scattered out throughout the country, throughout the area. So once they get that, they can go online and they, and they can enter a code. The online address will be mytwentytwencensus.gov. They'll go on there, they'll enter the code that's on the, on the letter they get, which is, which will identify their address, their unique address to the census. And then you go through and ask the questions. Uh, the, the questions we ask are very, very minor, like how many people live in your household, what are their names, what are their ages, what are, what are their nationality? And do you own or rent your home? And we also ask for the phone number of the person completing the census. So it's very, very simple information, about fifteen minutes per person, depending on how many people you have in your household. Uh, so it would take longer to get more people. Uh, and then once the information is submitted, is safe and secure, uh, is not shared with any other government, government organizations or agencies, and, uh, that we're prohibited by law from releasing the information, it's all safe and secure. And, and we basically want to count every person, resident of the United States as of April first. So April first is like this, there's what we call Census Day, and that's like a snapshot of whole, of everywhere in, in the United States of who you have, at what address in the United States. So, uh, we will begin, well, like I said, March twelfth through twentieth, the first letter with the, with the unique letter. And then we have five more follow-up letters for those who did not respond. So the first one will be March twelfth, and then we'll have two more in March. And the beginning of April, April eighth, the third correspondence will actually include a paper survey. So if you do not respond the first three times, uh, those who have not responded will then get a paper survey at that time. Uh, and then the final post, there'll be a postcard sent the last week of April, and then beginning of May, that's when we have the people, the census takers, that will start going door to door and knocking on doors for those who did not respond as yet. And they are hiring people to do that. If you know anyone who wants a job, they're trying to hire people from every area. It's a part-time work, and pays pretty well. It's nineteen dollars an hour for Saginaw County, plus fifty-eight cents for every mile you drive. Okay? A lot of the jobs have already been, been, you know, spoken for, but you can go online by twenty-twenty census, twenty-twenty census.gov/jobs and apply for those positions. So they will hire people from every area, so we have local people going, going out in that area. Now, how, how can you help? Basically, what we're asking you to do is become a partner with the U.S. Census Group. Uh, and to be a partner is what we're asking you to do is we're asking for the mayor to establish a complete county committee. It's a committee of people throughout their community that can help promote the census and the awareness of the census. And what we're, what we're needing are trusted voices, people that, that the people, the people on the committee that represents different groups that you have in your community, that the people trust, that may not trust the federal government. They may not, you know, want the federal government. But if, if someone from their community that they know and respect is on a committee and brings it up, then that's, that's very important. So for example, some of the, some of the people we normally have on the committee is like a school principal or superintendent of, of your school district, someone from your hospital or clinic, uh, Chamber of Commerce, American Legions, uh, Trainers, or different groups that you may have. Just think of all the groups you may have. If you have one person from each of those groups on the committee. And, and it won't be a major time, time commitment that probably, you may not, only need four or five meetings or something like that for an hour at a time or something. Uh, once you establish the committee, I would be glad to come and give a presentation to the committee. We have a PowerPoint presentation and training that we can do for about an hour. Uh, and that, that will be, be great if you could be willing to do that. And they certainly have a complete count. Uh, the other, the, and another group are the schools. And we do have a program called Statistics in Schools, S.I.S., we call it. Uh, and it's, uh, which we have lesson plans for every grade from kindergarten all the way to high school. So, uh, we're asking for the schools to do something for census on March second through sixth. This is a census week for the schools. We have a handout that we would like the schools to give to the students to bring home to their parents, to let them know that the following week you're gonna be getting a survey, and that your funding for your, for your school is dependent upon you participating in that census. So we're trying to try all different angles to try to get people to participate. And for those who do not participate, then you, you won't have them counted, so you'll lose money every year for the next ten years. Some of the common questions people ask about people who are, have vacation homes who are in Florida for certain months, or, uh, and the idea is wherever your resident is the majority of the time, six months plus one day, that's where you should be counted. Uh, some people ask about, uh, students who are, uh, joint custody between the board's parents, fifty-fifty. If it's fifty-fifty, where is a student at on April first? So that, that's the guideline to go by when it comes to the census count. Uh, so we're trying to, uh, get the best count possible. So if you'd be willing to establish a committee, Mayor, uh, we would appreciate that, uh, and letting know, uh, you know, as members, and then you wanna have a meeting, I'll try to schedule you to have someone and myself or someone like myself to come and give a presentation to the committee. Are there any questions?
Just as a follow-up to that, we absolutely want to form a and establish a committee. We did that ten years ago. Um, we were very good about getting a very good count. I remember Krista Shirock was a trustee on this board, and she was in charge, uh, as kind of the committee chair, and had others that worked with her, but did a phenomenal job to make sure that we got just about every, and I can't remember how high of a percentage we had counted of what we knew was out there. Now, we had some, you know, conscientious objectors that were just not gonna fill it out, but it was such a small segment of, you know, the population that we knew that was here, um, that, you know, I don't think we left very much funding on the table in terms of that ten-year period. But yes, we absolutely want to form a, a, a working committee and get each and every single person counted that we potentially can. 'Cause, like you said, it's all formula-driven. All of our funding is based on that, um, school funding, everything. So yeah, and we'll be working hard to do that and...
Yeah, we, we do recommend that we have like census days or nights which are at, at a library or here or anywhere that you can invite people to come in to do the census, have the computers set up like at the school, and different things, any type of, of events that you have a lot of people in. If you have a website, put it on your website. If you have a water bill, put it on your water bill. All different ideas, anything to promote, let them know that on March twelfth, that's when they're gonna get something, that week of March twelfth, something in the mail.
Yeah.
If also, you should find in your packet a, a name of Marilyn Sanders, who is the Director of the Census Bureau. Uh, if you could send a letter to her telling her that you're going to be forming a committee.
Okay.
And then send me a copy of it, the address should be in your folder.
Okay.
And, uh, we have a website, the national website with maps in Illinois with a little dot by Sherman, saying that you're gonna be forming that committee, so we know where all the committees are. So you'll be on the mailing list and that sort of thing.
Absolutely.
So, um, okay, any other questions?
You know, one thing that we should probably do is also send out, and we'll put it in our newsletter as well, and we'll blast it through social media, um, but maybe even just our own postcard that kind of just references and dubs it down into layman one-on-one terms about how everything is triggered and comes back to funding based on our counts. And we need to just turn it into...
Yeah, we have a video on YouTube. There's a video on YouTube which I referenced, you can hear in there, which is a guide, you type in YouTube and get, say, Guide to Twenty-Twenty Census. And it's a six-and-a-half-minute video that, that tells you how to complete the census online, which is, which should be a good link as well. Are there, there's other videos about Census One-on-One, so explaining how important it is.
Yeah.
But yeah, anything you can do when it comes to linking, uh, the census website or the census YouTube page, uh, or videos relating to census awareness. So we're kind of concerned about the Internet being the first time we use the Internet for it, but with this day and age with technology, it would be not very efficient for us not to use the Internet. But we do, we'll have a paper available for anyone who wants to do it by paper as well. And also by phone, so they can actually call in for the first time as well and do it over the phone if they prefer that as opposed to the Internet or paper.
Isn't there a mechanism also that if we, if somebody does object to being counted, that we can sign affidavits to say that we know that they specifically live there and should be counted? I think that was what happened ten years ago.
Well, uh, what happened, I don't know about that, which I can get back with you and check on that. But I do know that if they go to a house, if the census taker, the numerator goes to a house and they will not get the information.
Mm-hmm.
At the last resort, they have the right, the, the, the object, I mean, the option of going to a neighbor and asking the neighbor, who lives there? Do you know the names? Do you know how many people live there? And that sort of thing.
Do they have to sign an official affidavit attesting to that?
That could be. I don't, I will, I will check on that and get back with you. But there are people that will not do it. Simply will not do it, as you're, as you're aware of. And we try to get the information from a neighbor, but that's the very last resort.
Right.
Uh, but the person hopefully will, but there are going to be people that won't do it, that just won't do it.
There are vacant homes because people are in nursing homes.
Yeah, you know, we do have a group quarter, you have nursing homes here. Uh, we have a group quarters program in which they're doing that now, actually. They're going to the administrators of the nursing homes, prisons, they're called prisons, prisons, but, uh, all, everybody from nursing home or any type of group quarters are counting that way as well. So they're counted through the administrator of that facility.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your time. Thank you very much. We'll continue to work, uh, look forward to working with you and work together, and we'll get the committee established soon. Look forward to getting that information from you, if you could, from the...
I sure will.
And then, uh, safe travels to Auburn.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Legal counsel's arrived.
Let's run that live. I'll have an attorney for anything with the roll.
Okay, so let's skip back on the agenda to the Clerk's report. We have the presentation of the February fourth, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes. Those have been sent out, uh, prior to the meeting for your review. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented by the clerk? Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the February twentieth, February fourth, twenty-twenty minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Rockford. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
That's five members voting yes, none voting no. The minutes are adopted, will be added to the Bill's website. Next item is the presentation of the bills. The bills are presented. The questions regarding the bills. We need a motion to pay the bills, is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
That's five members voting yes, none voting no. The bills are approved for payment. No Treasurers' Report correct.
Correct.
Just making sure. Okay, no Treasurers' Report. That moves us down to the Engineering Report. He's off this evening, saving us money. Anybody have questions regarding engineering? Spooks illegal? Counselor?
Nothing. Yep.
Village Administrator?
None, nothing, sir.
Economic Development Coordinator?
Nothing at all, sir.
Mr. President? Wow, a lot under Mr. President's report. Who did that? All right. Item number one. I'm gonna read it into the record. So Ordinance Regarding the Employee Drug and Alcohol Policy. That ordinance sits on the table. Counselor Craven is here. You wanna brief us on this? Administrator?
Simply to update employee policies given the recreational marijuana laws. Uh, still a zero-tolerance village.
This is at the request of, is this the one? Yeah. No. IMR.
It's an IML.
It's an IML. It's an IML policy. It suggested that municipalities and their members...
So the Illinois Mischievous Risk Management Association...
Yes.
Recommends, do adopt...
Yes.
...their, our insurance carrier?
Yes.
Any questions, discussion, everybody comfortable with?
Did we not have it before?
No, we have, we already have something, um, right? In, in the code, in the, in the personnel policy. This is obviously updated to twenty-twenty standards as a result of, you know, things becoming legal.
Couple other things too, mostly.
Yeah.
We also sent copies of that draft to the unions who represent some of our employees, and they have no problem with that, just so we can make sure we put out something that doesn't have problems contrary to any contractual provision. So we're good there too.
Any further discussion, questions? You comfortable with passing this, this, this evening?
Yes.
Yes, 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 okay? All right, that being said, an ordinance adopting employee drug and alcohol policy under the Village of Sherman Personnel Code, ordinance number two thousand and twenty dash zero four, providing, that is correct, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that's it, that ordinance sits on the table. Um, is there a motion, do adopt? Motion been made by, uh, Trustee Long, seconded by Trustee Tim. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Five members voting yes, none voting no. The ordinance is adopted. That was, Trustee Long, you made that motion, right? Tim? Trustee Tim? Okay. Uh, let's see here. Item number two is an ordinance imposing a fine to comply with the requirements of building permits. This is a follow-up in regard to a situation that I spoke about, I think it was two meetings ago now. Um, we've had time to review, put on paper, a ordinance to that effect that imposes some fines to try and alleviate some of these issues that we are having with building permits and non-compliance. Uh, I know that, uh, Administrator Stratton had briefed you all on what's the stipulations that are included in this ordinance, that. All being said, is there any discussion, comments, thoughts? Comfortable with adopting and passing this evening as a board? Okay, getting the consensus here? Okay, an ordinance imposing a fine for failing to comply with requirements of building permits. Ordinance number twenty-twenty dash zero three. Is there a motion to do adopt? Trustee Rockford makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Long? Long? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Clerk, call roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Five members voting yes, none voting no. Ordinance is adopted. Item number three, right into the record, is a request for easement to Ameren, Illinois, for underground electrical at Sherman Police Department for a fiber optic building by Cascom. Table, is that what I'm telling you? All right, this is table. Item number four. Pretty much self-explanatory, video gaming license to Cancun Incorporated. Cancun is seeking, uh, video gaming. If you're familiar with Cancun Restaurant, you'll know that the back, that very, very far back room... Oh, he's here, there you are. Yeah. Why don't you come on forward, tell us about your request?
Yes.
The, uh, the back, the very far back room. I don't know how much, uh, you know, seating that it gets, but you would like to turn it into essentially a little gaming area?
For the gaming machines, no seating, uh, any...
No bunkhouse.
No. There will be doors also there.
Yeah.
I explained that, you know, I invited before and after, you can show the area.
Yeah. I don't see a problem with this at all.
How many, how many machines are?
Five.
Five?
Yes.
This is, uh...
J and J does the provider.
Yep, and this is in full compliance with our ordinance and the, kind of the stipulation that we've always set forth that, that we don't, aren't really looking for just gaming parlors, but something that's subsidiary to your main business, which is obviously food service, um, will help with, you know, and offset the cost of food and labor and rent and everything along those lines. We've got a very nice establishment there in Sherman, we love it. Um, I love it, my kids love it. My wife loves it. Uh, but I, I think it's a great, I mean, it's gonna be a great addition for your business, your business model, and everybody else's.
But, but, yeah.
So, any trustees, questions?
We have a couple available anyway, didn't we? We have some people.
Two open. Two open right now, so...
So just we add the, or two licenses available?
Yes.
Okay. So each license is allowed to five machines?
Yes.
Is that how that works?
You understand, well, you actually could have six now.
It's now six, yeah.
Yes, I believe there will be a sixth available.
Okay. Okay.
The new legislation at the end of the session that passed on May thirty-first actually allowed the addition of an extra...
And we do it one business, and it's a six machine.
Okay, I think everybody's comfortable with moving forward. So we're gonna, I'm gonna seek a motion from the floor. Is there a motion to grant Cancun Incorporated a gaming, a gaming license to do gaming operations in the Village of Sherman? Motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by, who wants to second? Trustee Rockford? Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Five members voting yes, none voting no. Measure's adopted.
For sure, thank you.
Work with Mr. Stratton here to, to take care of everything, and you'll be...
I'll be in contact with him.
Yes.
And I'll start processing the application tomorrow.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I do have one more question, like how soon will you have it there?
I don't know, yeah, that's not, that's out of my hands. I believe it, it goes as the, uh, first right now in here, then from here it goes to the, the provider, the government, and so, 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 yes. But you will, you will know, as, I guess, before me.
All right, well, thanks, sir. You're a bridge. Yeah, you're a bridge, you can hang out the rest of the evening, or you can take off if you want.
I'll let you fight.
All right, here we go. Let's, let's see here.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, item number five, right into the record. Williamsville High School After Prom. How about, oh, that's cheap.
It's dark out there, starting to turn the light on for Alfred.
That was interesting.
We're so good, we can do this job in the dark. Williamsburg High School After Prom 2020 sponsorship. There's been a request made by the After Prom Committee. We've done this in multiple years past. Your business owner, whatever, government, parents and guardians of Williamsburg High School. Is this right? Okay. Are in the process of organizing the 2020 After Prom activities. Our goal is to give students a fun, safe, and alcohol-free evening to enjoy. We will be providing various chaperone games, food, and activities for the participation between the hours of 11:30 and 2:30 a.m. at Williamsburg High School on May 2, 2020. With this letter, we are asking if you would consider helping us achieve our goals. Besides providing food and entertainment, we hope to collect enough donations to provide door prizes for every Williamsburg junior and senior who attends After Prom. The W H S After Prom is always well-attended and well-run because of the generosity of sponsors and the hard work of volunteers that want to keep our students in a safe and well-supervised environment. Donation can be monetary or in the form of a gift and/or produce product or service from your business. An official thank you will appear in the local newspaper. That being said, we've typically, how much have we done? We've done $500 in the past. Is there no reason why not to change that right now? Does anybody have any reason to change that? Okay. Motion to approve $500 donation to After Prom. Trustee, who wants to do this? Who wants to help the kids?
Well, I want to help the kids, but yeah, I'm happy.
Everybody wants to do it. Trustee Rockford makes a motion, seconded by trustee Gray. Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gray? Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Five members voting yes, none voting no. That measure is adopted. Moving on, item number six. Williamsburg High School Vocal Music Boosters Scholarship Sponsorship. We did this last year. Williamsburg Board. We matched, we do 250, right there?
It's $500 together.
$500 together. We match what they do, they match what we do, so 250 on each side. So motion to approve $250 to Vocal Music Booster Scholarship. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Tim makes a motion, seconded by trustee Long. Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Okay, that's five members voting yes, none voting no. That measure is adopted. This isn't on here, and we're not going to do it tonight, but I'm going to tell you about it because I just received it. So we have another request along the similar lines. It's only for $100. So that I don't get this incorrect, this just came in. Hi, Trevor, I thought I said, let's see. Okay, there's a eighth, for the eighth grade graduation party. The committee, so I'm just going to read this. Hey, Trevor, I thought I sent you a message last night, but it appears I didn't end up sending it. I am part of the planning committee for the eighth grade graduation party along with Michelle Fuhr, Rochelle Menendez, Krista Shorrock, and a handful of other parents. Since our kids haven't had any dances, we thought to throw a nice party at the Athletic Club. We've been reaching out for donations from various places. The Village of Williamsburg has donated $100 for the party. Would this be something the Village of Sherman could donate to? I said we'd match what they did. So I'm, got us on the hook for that, so I hope I get a floor, a motion from a floor. Motion to donate $100 to the eighth grade.
As long as we can do it tonight, I guess, on the agenda, but
Yeah, no, I guess we're not even going to do it tonight. Will you please add it to the agenda? No, let's not do it today. Add it to the agenda, it's not an emergency.
I'm going to change my vote until next meeting, so.
We'll just add it. But do know that, you know
Everybody stay happy for two weeks.
Do know that that motion or that measure is sitting out there. We need to get, do that, do that as well. Okay, committee and department reports, there are any committee and department reports. Chief Baggert, anything from the Sherman Police Department?
Nothing.
Sherman Emergency Management Agency. Director Moses out of the country. He had a death in the family. So our condolences to him, if you see him. Echo those sentiments. Public Works Evening Off. Brings us to new business, of which there is no new business. There is no old business. Civic Organizations. We have two items under there, one of which we already completed,